All right, we're gonna call this next hearing, what are you hearing to order?
Please take notice.
Bob will lead the notice.
Take notice, an application has been made by Bonanza Grain, also known as Krupel Rock and Ready Mix, Highway 6 South, Highway 44, and Alan Sheehan, 15, 6, 8 year old, 44 road for a condition use permit to expand a rock quarry and do mineral extraction in an ag district. In Caladonia Township, Section 23, said applicant standing making application there is fee owner says to try and land, hearing on this application will be held at the historic courthouse commissioner's room, City of Caladonia, Minnesota, 5591 at 8 p.m., Monday, November 18th. All persons having interest in the matter will be given the opportunity to be heard relative to granting or denying the said application. Excuse the county plant commission, the box, Dylan, and Billy, administrator, FIA number 6.
Okay, Bob, you wanna explain, or I don't know what to...
Yeah, this, this hearing was last held in, in May. Planting Commission recommended approval of this rock quarry application. And the county board actually issued a six-month permit back on July 2nd, and so this is a follow-up to that six-month permit, or condition use permit granted to Banza Grain. Their six month is, six months is up January 2nd, and so it's timely in as far as getting their application submitted, to extend that condition use permit for additional time. There were six conditions placed on that condition use permit back on July 2nd, and I'll just read them. But the county board put these six conditions on there as follows, one, all federal, state, local permits be obtained and followed, two, a six-month time limit with the review of the permit within six months, and also the new application with application fees is required. Number three, that seismograph readings will be done at six locations, four, that applicants would notify any residences within a half mile before the next blast, five, that the blast should replicate the April 4th, 2013 blast as much as possible, and six, the south and west mine boundary lines are to be surveyed. They have done all six of those conditions, including the survey of the property. Survey has been done and submitted, that being done by Joel Forson Land Survey. That survey also takes into account the thousand-foot setback from Brent Schrader's house located to the southwest. Survey includes the additional land that they plan to expand out to, and that parcel is right at 17.08 acres in size. Krupels have submitted their operation and reclamation plan, similar to what was submitted back in, in May. Typical bay is gonna include about 15 loads of material, in this case, construction sand, leaving the mine daily. We plan to keep the operation open Monday through Fridays, 7 a.m. to 5 p.m., and occasionally on Saturdays. Their all route is gonna be from the mine heading to the north, out to County 12, and then east to Highway 44 for those loads, and then from there out to various farm locations for typically it's for sand bedding for free stalls or any fill sand needed in the area. Reclamation of the property after mining is complete is proposed to be push material back over top of the mine area and seed down to vegetation to accommodate any agricultural use such as pasture, as far as that goes. I handed out to you there, or how I did, graphs that show comparisons of the last five years of blasting, including the October 24th blast. One of the criteria back in May, or July, when the county board approved this, was that they tried to replicate the April 2013 blast as much as possible in their next blast, and that is what they attempted to do on October 13th. When I compare the two side by side, the number of holes drilled was identical with 25, the hole size was identical at four and a half inches in size, depth of the hole was within two inches, 58 inches on, in October, and 60 inches back in April. The amount of total explosive, explosive was within 100 pounds when you're talking over four ton of material there, so I think they did a very good job of trying to replicate that next blast. Some of the bar graphs there, looking at the decibel readings from the air blast, and also seismograph readings from the last, from July 09th to April of 2013, and also from this October blast there too. And of course, in the October blast, there was six locations for the seismograph reading. They set one up at Shebers, located to the north of the blast site, they put one at the Back Forty Supper Club directly east, or kind of northeast of the blast site, there was another one to the south at Nancy Schrader's house, to the southwest at Brent Schrader's house, directly west, the intersection of Prairie Ridge Road and County 12, and then another one to the west at Jensen Residence. None of the seismograph readings exceeded federal limits, nor did any of the decibel levels exceed federal limits as far as the air blast, and so those criteria were met. That's about all I got.
Okay, Gary, you wanna come forward? Is there anything you wanna add, or what Bob has said?
Well, I guess we took the blast as close as we could, and, and the readings come out about where we, where we thought they were, and that expert we had in here at the previous meeting. I'm not looking at changing any different plans in the future, you know, as far as bigger blasts or anything, this is probably the biggest one, or close to the biggest size that we've taken.
Which you surveyed now, was the south boundary area and the west boundary, that's where the survey was, that's on the property line, you surveyed the property line?
No, we surveyed just the pit what we're going to excavate.
Okay, okay.
It went all the way around.
Awesome, okay, all the way around.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that takes into the thousand feet from, and the 50 feet setback, all of that.
Yeah.
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 So, actually, how far away from the property line are you, more than 50 feet probably?
Oh yeah, we're more than 50 feet from the property line, yes.
Yeah, is that, whose property is next to you, it's not Brent's, is it? I mean, that property line, if that is your, your house property, is that zone residential that goes right up to your...
I don't think it's all residential, it's not zone.
How much is zone residential there?
There's not a zone residential.
It's all zone A.
Zone A, oh, where your house is, okay, all right. So that's, that's extended what you want to mine is in that area there, Gary?
Correct. Has anybody in the Planting Commission got any questions for Bonanza or Krupel Rock Products?
Any idea the life of that mine, or how much you think might be there yet, or time wise, or...
Oh, I think there's 20 years there yet, for sure.
The information, it said there was a map included, but they're thinking this is the first time that you're having an application, just a minute.
Is, I know at the blast, what was it, I didn't make it, at the blast to the, when you had the last blast, but what was the experience, I know some of you were there, what was the experience?
I was at the Back Forty, it was more of a boom sound, loud blast, you could feel the ground shake a little bit, I didn't notice significant blast, it was kind of a anticlimactic thing, expect it more.
I was up to Brent's property.
Very close.
Yeah, it felt to me like if you were standing and a bulldozer drove by, or bulldozer shakes the ground a little bit, but it was just in the, you know, on the balls of your feet, and it just lasted two or three seconds, it wasn't long, you know, but it was just a, you could feel it, but it wasn't much.
I was at Brent's too, and I likened it to like a train going by, rolling by.
Okay. I found out at nine o'clock that morning that we were blasting.
No, we just stood like...
I thought we were gonna be informed, but...
Over at Nancy's.
You were at Nancy's?
Okay, just a minute, anybody else on the Planting Commission got any more comments?
Well, Glenn Cruz and I were at Nancy's there, and I think Commissioner Schultz was there, he was sitting on the, on the wall by Nancy's garage, and he felt a shake. I didn't really, I'm numb anyway, but I didn't feel it, I was standing, you know, next to the garage there, and it sounded like a shotgun shell that went off, and a cloud of dust, that's basically what I observed. This is kind of, okay.
Yes, Commissioner Zbruski, open in Caladonia, I was there with a gentleman, Mr. Cruz, and I can't go over your name, which service, and then I'm standing with Steve Schultz, and I was also in Nancy's home previous to the blast, looking at the cracks in the building inside. I take issue with that the blast was in replication of the April shot, for the simple fact that the face that was detonated on, on 24th of October was the face of the mine that is facing to the north. The April blast occurred on that portion of the mine, whose face was to the south. And according to the gentleman that came from the Chicagoland area with his PowerPoint presentation back in the day, explaining to you all about blasting and seismograph and the earth particles moving, and then that air particles moving, the question came to him about frost and the direction of the blast, in other words, that the air pressure rebounds from the face and moves opposite of the face, therefore, the blast that occurred in October, the air pressure generally moved to the north, which was not replicating at all what you had asked the blaster to do in your CUP. Now, in regards to, in regards to, are there any other comments? I hope you will be talking about reclamation, I would like to speak to that, whenever you will allow me to do so.
No, I don't understand what you're saying, that the one blast faced the north, and the other blast faced the south, out there side by side.
Well, there's, you were out there, you saw the mine, mine is a horseshoe shape, the pit is a horseshoe shape.
But the blast site was just moved over...
It's pretty much a straight wall, same face.
How can you say the blast was from...
That's not what, that's not how it was described to me back in May, when that gentleman was here talking about that.
No, that we saw where the blast was, it was, it was just moved over on the same face.
Whatever it was, pretty much.
Yeah.
Well, then I'm, I'm sorry, then I misunderstood the description of the April blast.
Same face.
I got the impression from the April blast that, that it was the, that part of the horseshoe of the mine that was circling towards the northwest.
No, no.
Okay, I stand corrected, thank you. But what about reclamation?
Okay, talk about.
Okay. Uh, reclamation, reclamation, reclamation. I assume that the ordinance is still under the same numerology even though there's been some additions to it, so I'm assuming it's 2009. Page 127, 26.8, reclamation plan, there's nowhere in that section that discusses when the reclamation should actually commence.
Well, if you read farther, it explains where, when it commences. And reclamation, in this case, they're talking about putting some material back over that's suitable to be seeded down, that would include topsoil.
Yeah, I understand all that.
And then seed it down for agriculture.
I understand that too, but as to when you start reclamation of the pit, there, there is no time specified.
Well, I don't have that ordinance in front of me, but I believe it says within three months after the mine closed, or the permit has been revoked.
It says, all mining is...
But can you start the reclamation? Can you start the reclamation before the three months?
Reclamation shall be complete with one calendar year after operation, season.
That's completion, it doesn't say when it should start.
That's what you mean, does?
The difference, but you start.
When you start, it's done.
Well, I think so.
No?
I talked to a DNR person up in the state, I don't know, I can't remember his name right now, but I suppose I can go up there and talk to somebody again. So I was talking about the situation down in our photography here in the county, and he said, well, you know, the best filter for your aquifer is what's on top. In other words, the best purifying filter that we have naturally occurring in our county is the overbearing.
Is the topsoil.
Yeah, right.
You got you.
Yeah, we know that.
Yeah, we know that.
Good, okay, so, here's the situation, we now have an extending scar of land that is totally exposed, the filter has been removed, I don't know how many acres in the mine.
It was 17 acres.
No, 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 that's the proposal.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know how, how big the scar is right now, how big the pit is, how many acres, but, and there's another pit, just...
We're talking about this one, we're talking about this one.
So, here's, so here's the point, the point is, we need to protect the aquifers of Houston County. As soon as you remove the overbearing, that scar does not filter anything that drops into it. To say that the pit is below the current general lay of the undulating agricultural land around it, tells me that it actually is concentrating any pollutants that would be in the mine, and would go directly down to the aquifer, because sandstone and limestone do not filter anything except particulates. So, the big issue is, if there would be some hydrocarbon liquid pollutants in the mine pit, they go straight down, there is no filter there, and this is why I'm talking about reclamation. I think that you should stipulate that reclamation shall occur with every two to three acres that are now exposed in the pit, they've got maybe five acres exposed, two acres exposed, I don't know what it is, but as soon as they expose X number of acres, then they have to fill in what's behind them that they first did, so that that footprint of, of exposed land is always as small as possible, within the requirements for the equipment that they need, you know, whatever footprint they need. But beyond that, once that footprint has been expanded, and the machinery doesn't require any more of a footprint, then that other scar should be filled immediately, so that we don't forget the possibility of somebody tipping over a fuel tank, and it goes straight down to the aquifer. If it's gonna tip, let it tip over on the reclaimed portion of the scar. You see what I'm saying?
Yeah, Bob, is that, that'd be a change in the ordinance?
What's that?
That, to, to do what he's talking about, is it would be a, require a change in the ordinance?
No, there's nothing in the ordinance that says that you can't stipulate that. It doesn't, the ordinance says that after the mine is finished, then the reclamation must be done with an X number of days, months, or two years, right? But it doesn't say you couldn't commence the reclamation before the mine is actually stopped. I mean, why do you have to excavate 40 acres and have it sit bare for 25 years, when you only need three acres, or two acres, for the processing, for the brining, for the stock pump?
I, I understand where you're coming from.
Yes.
But we look at all the other quarries and mines in this county, just pick for instance the quarry there, or the, the mine just out of Spring Grove there on 44.
Yes, I've been there.
Acres and acres and acres of land there.
Yes, I know, it's terrible.
And you're gonna have to, if you do it for Mr. Krupel here, you're, they're gonna have to do it too.
Right, everybody.
Right, and I think that that mine site, is that within Houston County, that you, when you refer to...
Sure is, sure is, you know where Houston County boundary is.
Sure, okay, so, we both agree with that, so I think that that place should also be being reclaimed right now, for the simple fact that they don't need all of that exposed pit floor for their operation. And that big scar, right now, if a, if a, if a tank leaked gasoline, or diesel, or some other hydrocarbons that's around there, it goes straight down to the aquifer, there's no soil there to filter anything, and that's the whole point of what your job is, is to protect and conserve and preserve the water quality of this county. And we got lots of pits. Thank you.
Okay. Is there anybody else present, wanna make any comments on this application?
One other one, please.
Just a minute, Mrs. Schrader, if you'd want to say something?
I just wanna thank you guys for the interest that you showed in this, coming out to see the damage that was done last spring, when that blast was, in my home, and for showing up the day of the blast, I didn't expect anybody to come. And that was the latest blast in all the years that have happened up there. There was hardly any movement in my home, there was hardly any noise, we were notified, which I appreciate, the seismographs were put out, which I appreciate too, and they didn't show anything, and it, it's just blowing my mind how a few months before that, the way my house shook, the way it cracked, the damage that has been done, and how this blast could hardly make any noise, or even, there wasn't even a big puff of sand. I just would like to know why there is such a difference. I appreciate Gary calling that morning, because at least no brat kids were out in the woods playing or anything, we could make sure nobody was gonna get hurt. But I think we have been treated fairly by you fellows, but as far as from purpose, I mean, Gary has refused to talk to us, Gary has refused to weigh hands that the football team got, because of what Brent's wife said at the last meeting here, and I think that's why we're here tonight. It's not that I care if Sheehans make a little money selling their sand, I don't care if Krupels make some money, but the way we have been treated by Gary, and him refusing to talk to us, and discuss any part of this whole thing, has been a bit discouraging, I guess. So I'd like to know how they put this stuff in the ground this time, that kept it from making that horrible noise and shaking up our building. There had to be something done differently, because it was the least amount I've ever seen happen.
The blast log is monitored by ATF, they watch the amount of explosive, as I understand it, right? And you're not going to say you put explosive or you don't put explosive, pardon me.
Right.
So, I'm not sure about that, I don't question the ATF, I don't question the amount, and I don't, I think, I would say that they tried real hard to get close. I could say going forward, that we can probably have seismographs by your place, I don't think you'd object to having seismographs at Brent's and Nancy's, put out four, I know they cost money, but...
Firstly, I don't have a problem with that, with four of them, because there's four houses that are closed, that way we got all four sides pretty well covered.
Yeah, and as far as notifying the neighbors, they should be notified 24 hours in advance, probably, so they know, around 24 hours, something like that, because you don't know.
Usually, I let them know the morning out, because if the weather permits or something, it might not happen.
Yeah, yeah, could you maybe let them know, how much advance notice do you want?
A day would have been great, I was out of town.
Okay, so, maybe, maybe a preliminary notice of 24 hours, and then a confirmation the morning out, something like that, that would, that would help.
Yeah, at least so we make sure that, yeah, it comes out on the list.
And if there's a seismograph at your place that he's blasted, then you will know if one is your regular, or one for some reason.
I wouldn't know, I can't, probably wouldn't be able to read them, but, you know, I don't know about this stuff, but all I know is this last blast was very slight compared to the previous one, I think ground was frozen then, I asked Blaskon, did that make any difference, and no one seemed to think so.
From, from the people that, I know some people who blast for a living in Alaska, and they would not say that, they don't believe frozen ground, for what it's worth, they don't believe frozen ground is anything good, now, the continuity of the rock does, you know, if there's a, if there's a break in the rock, or something like that, they say that would interrupt the tremors, but if it's solid rock all the way going back, yeah, then the tremors can go quite ways, solid rock, but, we couldn't find anything that, I mean, that confirms kind of what you said, Greg.
You know, the, the one last spring, people in town felt a little shaking and heard the blast, I didn't hear anything about anybody hearing it in town this time, so I just, I just get felt.
Well, we have to, yeah.
And I know you can't do anything about it because of what the seismograph and that said, and I don't want Sheehans to lose any money, they've always been good neighbors to me, and I, you know, but I just can't understand.
And we can, we understand, but this is difficult for both you two also, we understand that, we do, but there's business going on, we have to look at the facts, there's employment here, there's dairy farmers depending on this output.
I understand that.
This is very good business going on, it's good for the community, and so we have to weigh all of these factors, and we certainly, we are listening to you very strongly, we wanna, we wanna make sure that your concerns are met, but we also have an obligation with the Krupels.
But you say, there could be 20 years of sand there yet, is that what I understood?
It's possible, yeah.
Okay, so I have to wait 20 years before I can fix my house, because the next blast might be like the one last spring, and...
Well, I would say that if there's a seismograph in front of your house, and the blast goes off, and the seismograph shows that above the reading, and you have damage, you have a complaint.
Well, I had a complaint last spring, and nobody fixed it.
We don't have a seismograph.
Yeah, I know, but whose fault was that?
Well, we have cracks in our homes though, too, we not have, Krupel's not blasting next to us, see, that's the problem.
But I saw the one in my new addition.
Okay, yeah.
Going, the same time, you know.
Right.
I think this was very good for those of us who were there, I myself, when I saw his numbers the first time, and they meant nothing to me, now I was there standing, and I know what a, a reading of a seismograph is where I was standing, I have something to base that on, so if next time the numbers are huge, you know, we, we have someone go by.
Yeah.
I learned a lot on that. And I... And I, we, we wanna do what's good for everybody.
And I think with you fellows being there, it just told me, oh, that makes a big difference. Could you come back the next day, they're gonna blast? Because this one sure didn't shake anything, you know? And it was just a plop, and it was over, and the lady that came, because I have one of my grandchildren there, and I thought if I had to go outside, I wanted somebody there to watch him. And I said, is it over with? You know, it was unreal, unbelievable, but. Way.
Okay, anybody else, yes?
Is there a performance bond?
That is up to the county board. The county has never asked for a performance bond yet. You wanna know the history of it, so. Right, Bob?
That's right.
If you ask for a performance bond, you have to remember that the sand that you buy back from those people is probably more money added on to it.
Well, that's the way it does apply to oil changes, too. Section twenty-six zero-nine, a performance for mining operations shall be filed with the zoning administrator.
If there is one.
Huh?
If there is a bond.
In such a form as the county board shall prescribe.
That's right.
That's county board.
But the history is, the county board has been smart enough not to do it, okay? They haven't, they, they never asked for a performance bond.
I've even brought it up to the county board.
Have you really?
Yes.
I wonder why this is even in here, then?
It gives them an option to use it, if they see fit. Otherwise, they haven't seen fit to use that at all. If it's.
Anybody else on the planning commission? Have any, or, anybody in the audience have any comments?
I just wanna thank Greg. He's done really well to deal with, and I wanna thank you guys as well. Um, and, you know, Sheehans, you know, our, my whole intentions, you know, my mom told me about this when it happened. You know, I like dealing with things as a neighbor, and I'm a business guy, too. I just, you know, not really sure, my wife was at the last meeting there, what the disrespect, they're talking and working things out. You know, really, all I ask is for a little information on seismographs and things like that, to make sure that, you know, our property isn't in danger, is what I want. I don't care if he goes right up to change property lines, it's their property, if that's what they'd like to do with it? Great, you know, good for them, but I guess alls I ask is a little respect out of that. And I, I guess that's all, all I've got is negative, and, you know, can do business with Gary for some reason now, so. I'll maybe we'll talk after the meeting, but I just wanted to make that open, where things stood out in this, which isn't exactly where I was, ever intended to go. I never had anything against anybody, but because of this, that's the way this has ended up, so, which is unfortunate. But I do thank you guys for everything you've done, and the blasting company as well, so.
Okay, we appreciate your comments.
Yeah, thank you.
Anybody else have anything to? Any comments on the application? Any comments from the planning commission? If not, we wanna go through the criteria, Bob.
Planning commission should not recommend conditional use permit unless they find the following. One, does the proposed use conform to the county land use plan? Two, does the applicant demonstrate a need for the proposed use? Three, will the proposed use degrade the water quality of the county? Four, will the proposed use adversely increase the quantity of water runoff? Five, are soil conditions adequate to accommodate the proposed use? Six, does the proposed use create a potential pollution hazard? Seven, are adequate utilities, access roads, drainage, and other necessary facilities being provided? Eight, are adequate measures being taken to provide sufficient off-street parking and loading space to serve the proposed use? Nine, are facilities being provided to eliminate any traffic congestion or traffic hazard which may result from the proposed use? Ten, will the conditional use be injurious to the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity for purposes already permitted? Eleven, does the establishment of the conditional use of key mineral and early development and improvement of surrounding vacant property for predominant uses in the area? Twelve, are adequate measures being taken to prevent and control offensive odor, fumes, dust, noise, and vibration, so that none of these will constitute a nuisance and to control lighting signs and other lights in such manner that no disturbance to neighboring properties will result? Thirteen, is the density of the proposed residential development is not applicable? Fourteen, is the intensity of the proposed commercial industrial development greater than the intensity of the surrounding uses, or greater than the intensity characteristic of the applicable zoning district? Fifteen, are site-specific conditions and such other conditions established as required for the protection of the public's health, safety, morals, and general welfare?
Okay, we heard the criteria, has anybody got any comments on it?
Well, I think number twelve, with the vibration stuff, will address that with seismographs. That's, if I require you to put four?
Yeah, I, I'll put up four every time anyway, from here on out.
Okay, you, you oughta put one in all four directions, or, or, one's gotta go in front of Brent's?
One'll be at Bobby Sheever's, one at the Back Forty Supper Club, and one at Nancy's, and one at Brett's. That pretty well takes care of circumference of it.
And you'll know, give them twenty-four hours' advance notice, maybe confirm the morning of, so they have a day's notice.
I guess we can, we can try and do that, yes.
Yeah.
Just for my, our information, do you, do you take, like, how many feet off do you take at a blast? Five feet, or eight feet, or ten feet, or?
As far as?
Off the face?
It, it depends, like, the sear shot that we did October. It all depends on your face parameters.
Yeah, but just in general, I mean?
Thirty feet, thirty, forty feet.
Thirty feet, you had it back?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
How far is that face right now from the survey boundary? You proposed, where you surveyed those seventeen acres, how far back do you have to go yet?
I would say it's two, three hundred feet, for sure.
Two, three hundred feet, get back to the survey where you're going. And that's, like you said earlier, fifty feet or more, further than fifty feet from the property line, where the survey boundary is.
This survey prop, this survey line is, is farther than fifty feet from Sheehan property line.
From the, from the house.
Yeah.
You have to be a thousand feet.
And it definitely is a thousand feet back from.
That's where the survey is, a thousand foot back, right?
There's a property like that.
Can I say, when I bought that property, I could, I was told that because it is within two miles of the, of Catalonian limits, that I could someday, if, if wanted, to zone that residential, to turn that into a housing development. How would that change things and variances if I would do that? Or am I behind the eight ball with Gary being in there first?
You, you could, as long as you stayed a thousand foot away.
As long as we stay a thousand foot away.
Right.
Now, I'm just asking, I don't have any intention to do that.
As long as you stayed a thousand foot away, you could develop or rezone it and plot it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Like I said, I don't have any intention to do on that, but it's an option.
Yes.
I have a question, you talked.
You, you state your name.
Oh, Yvonne Proxton.
Okay.
You talked about how many feet you took from the face. Was that the same this time as it was in April?
Gary or Greg?
It was very similar. Which you gotta remember, when you're excavating rock or sand, it, it's not like cutting something with a knife, where everything is gonna be exact every time. What, our goal was to get our twenty-five holes to the same amount of tons of rock, so we could get the same amount of pounds in. So it, it's gonna vary anywhere from that twenty-five, you could take up to sixty feet, depending upon how wide and how long of an open area that you're able to excavate at that point. So I would say that twenty-five to forty feet is gonna be a good average on that pit. On how much you're gonna go, because you're, you're talking about fifty-eight to sixty feet of sand, you know? And he knows how much he needs, spring and fall, and that's what we'll go with.
Okay. Did you have a question, Mrs. Schrader?
Yeah, I was just wondering, I haven't really gotten the answer as to why there was so much, no noise this time.
I don't, maybe.
Can we discuss that afterwards, do you think?
Well, I don't know, maybe, you wanna address it, Gary, or Greg?
You know, if I was able to load every shot and tell you exactly what was gonna happen day to day. Beepers, when, when we set this one up, we wanted it to be exactly like in April, to find out if we were doing damage. To be quite honest, when I did the delivery ticket on that shot, when our truck driver gave me his weights, I couldn't believe that we were that close. Kinda unheard of. We, we had our stemming height was the same, everything we did, we tried to replicate what we did in April, to find out what was going on, if there was an issue, and why it was quieter. I'm not sure if, on April fourth, when we did that blast, to the October blast, was the wind in the same direction, I'm not sure. I don't have those blast reports in front. The direction of wind can change the noise quite a bit. Could be, if you have a soft spot in your face that you're mining, if there's some softer material there, and that powder blows through it, you're gonna get more noise. Okay, 'cause blasting is, just like us as humans, that explosive gas is gonna take the easiest route it can with the less resistance. So if we have a soft spot or a pocket, that's where you're gonna get a lot of your noise. And in the industry, that's usually what we find out, there's softer material that will give us a louder air blast, and usually rock or material flying. Why it was quieter that day, I really don't know if it was, other than, I guess, the one you could compare would be Sheevers.
It says Sheevers was, was louder in, in October, by one, yeah. One twenty-five to one twenty-six.
Okay.
So.
You know, that's, that's the only one that would be, because in April, we were at Sheevers, and Sheehans with the seismographs. So Sheevers would be the only one, and actually, the face is pointing at them. So that would be your best comparison, if it was louder or quieter.
Looks pretty close, but.
Greg? The, that seismograph does show the wind speed from the blast as well, is that correct, Greg?
No, the wind direction, wind speed is basically, when, when you're documenting that, you are getting wind direction, from what direction the wind is blowing out of. And we have to rely on the weatherman and the radio to tell us what it's predicted. We don't have instruments to pick up wind speed the day of a blast.
'Cause, yeah, I mean, 'cause that's what I feel, I don't think it is through the ground that caused any damage to either one of our homes. What tests did they have as far as wind velocity coming at the structures?
The air blast.
The air blast, yeah.
The wind was northwest fifteen mile.
Well, yeah, that's just the weather. I'm talking about on the actual blast, the repercussion of the blast, is what I think is shaking. You know, 'cause like I said, the trim on the side of my houses, you know, your terrain or whatever you're feeling out there when you were there, that's what seems to, every single time. You know, I can get them glued on better, but it seems to shake those down a little bit. I can see that after the blast, it was videoed and.
Part of your decibel reading count is the air blast.
Is it? But that's just, no, decibels is just noise, that's not the last video wind pressure.
Explain that, Greg.
Your decibels is a measure of change in air pressure. Okay?
Yeah.
So when you're moving a chunk of the earth like that, it's gotta create some change in pressure. Okay? Now, one thing, I think I told someone, a gentleman that were at Brent's house that day, the thing you gotta remember with decibels is, so we had a one twenty-six at Sheevers, correct?
Yes.
Okay, a one thirty-two is twice as loud as a one twenty-six, okay? That is how it is measured. Now, the regulation is a one thirty-four is our limit, okay? Anything after that, we can be cited. Okay? Now, through the studies, when we, a gentleman from Vibrotech here, one of the things you see with air blast is you'll start to see spidering. And that is because the air blast is moving a wall, and it's like a springboard, it comes back. So you'll start to see spidering, okay? And they say that will not start until around one fifty, okay? So that one fifty is how many times higher than that one thirty-two? You go every six decibels, is twice as loud, twice as loud. A one thirty-four, I have heard them, you'll know it, I mean, there's no doubt. And I would say on an average, with the amount of blasting that we do, we are between a one twenty and a one twenty-eight. Anywhere we go, whether it's limestone, hard rock, sandstone. But I do feel that that is what you're feeling more than any ground vibration, is the air pressure change.
Does that explain a bit more to Schrader? I'm just curious of what, so you're saying about the one fifty is where damage and spitting would, would occur to a structure?
That's what the studies and science, that is when they're saying that you'll start to see spidering and siding, or spidering in plaster and drywall, because of that movement, you'll start to see the spidering. Point, it's not a straight line track, it's a spider. Because more of that wall in the corners, the ceilings, has flexed. So it's flexing it and bringing it back. When it flexes, you're pushing, and it'll start to spread, when it comes back.
Yeah, and that makes, makes sense, the pressure comes in? That, that seems, that makes, and comes back, that makes total sense. But that can't happen at one twenty-five, where, what were we at? Just that one?
One twenty-five.
One twenty-five.
Well, Sheevers was one twenty-five. Yours was one seventeen, I believe.
Yeah. So what I'm asking, I guess, is that a possibility, or isn't? I mean, I don't wanna waste, you guys, five minutes, nor do our time.
I'm, I'm just gonna comment that according to science, I'm gonna say that, no, it's, it's not going to. That is why, in our industry, we're regulated, just like everybody else in their profession. And they have put these limits to us at a one thirty-four. I mean, there's, there's other states, other than Minnesota, that it's less. That they really watch the decibels. But that is, you know, we can't do anything about that here, but I'm just saying that it's not just, if, if they're going by the federal guidelines, which probably ninety percent of the states do, it's a one thirty-four.
How many times in the last three years have, have blasted, about six?
Six, seven.
Six or seven.
I think for one year, there was three blasts, correct?
I'm just, I'm just regoing back in my head, you know, built a new house, and all of a sudden, I've got my sightings down, I have one piece under my deck that's fallen off, and it's like, you know, I wanted to call came destruction, what the heck's going on with that? And that's why I'm wondering, you know, but now looking back over the last two years, it's been little minute, things like that.
Well, they've blasted eleven times since July of '09.
Of '09.
Yeah.
Eleven times since '09. Interesting.
Okay, any comments from the planning commission? I, we went through the criteria, I guess I entertain a motion one way or another, for, for this, or.
We'll make a motion to recommend approval.
Is that what you are, but still?
With all federal and state regulations, and anybody wanna put anything more on?
Four.
More than four seismographs?
Yeah, well, yeah.
And notify the neighbors.
They say we're gonna do that.
Yeah, put it in, yeah, put four seismographs. Notify the neighbors twenty-four hours, and maybe the morning of. Give them a, give them a heads up twenty-four hours in advance, and try and do that. I mean, that, Brent, my, Brent wasn't home that day, we were there. But if you can get him twenty-four, just leave him a message or something, twenty-four hours in advance, that you're planning on it, confirm it maybe later.
You're gonna put a renewal date on it? Well, usually they're just for five years, I think.
Five years.
Yeah, all right.
So what if we get some damage before the five years fair up? Gary told me he didn't have anything to do with any of this, so I take all proposed here, fine.
But you'll have a seismograph, you know, in your yard.
That's between you and the blasting company, actually. My radar, you know? And so if even, you'll have evidence if there is, you'll have a seismograph reading to say that there was damage.
Should we stipulate that they get those? Should that be part of our?
Well, we're saying that he puts four seismographs.
Should we get a report?
That what, no?
I said, I didn't need a report after this last one, but if the host ever shakes.
We're the only one recorded, yeah. We're the only one recorded, yeah.
Well, you probably don't have a problem sharing the readings, do you? Are you excited here?
No.
We have to keep our records for five years according to ATF. So anytime anybody would want a record of anything in five years, we have to.
Give it to them?
Yep.
So if, if you want the, a copy of it, I think they'll give it to you if you ask.
I think you can ask. Does anybody have anything they want to add to it, Schrader?
All right. Just those two conditions besides the federal.
Okay, I'll second that. Bruce made the motion and seconded by Terry that we approve this conditional use permit for continuation of the Gorian, well, it's an expansion too, I guess, isn't it?
Yes.
And for a five-year period with stipulation of four seismic graphs at four different locations and what was the other one?
25.
Yeah, 24 hours advance notice to the neighbors. Do you want to put a half-mile radius or what do you want to? You know, you know who to notify.
Yeah, that's what you had before, but, you know.
He said he's going to do this.
Yeah, 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 do it, do it.
Okay, all up here, the motion's signed by me, say aye?
Aye.
Both, motion carries. And I think, thank you, everybody. The county board has approved it.
Yeah, that'll go to county board on December 3rd.
When was that?
December 3rd.
December 3rd? Okay, thank you. Thank you.
That was Niamh Duck.
Niamh Duck, Capers.